Are, do you need us to delay any further or we're good?
Sure.
All right. Well, I will call the meeting to order with that. Yeah, we'll hit right there. This is the November 28th meeting and the Johnson County Planning Commission. Before we call, go through the roll call, Jay, would you want to go ahead and, you know, maybe we can introduce one of our newest members, Kevin Hogan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. Jay Leipzig, the Planning Director. Yes, I just wanted to introduce Kevin Hogan is here this evening. This is his first meeting. And so we're glad to have Mr. Hogan as part of the Planning Commission. And as far as my recollection and my memory, this is the first time we've had a full 12-member Planning Commission. So I appreciate you all being here. It's great to see this many faces. And I'll have to practice my, my head turning, moving around, but it's nice to have everybody here this evening.
Kevin, would you like to briefly introduce yourself and tell, tell us about you?
Sure. I am a former teacher from here in Olathe. I taught industrial arts and technology education and coached all the sports at Oregon Trail Junior High and Indian Trail Junior High and California Trail Junior High. And before that, I was in Topeka for 10 years. I did 26 years here. And I'm originally from Emporia. Got my degree first, my bachelor's and master's from Emporia State. And that's about it. I enjoy golf. I enjoy bowling. Just about anything that's fun. So I'm looking forward to doing this.
Welcome. We're happy to have you. And I think that I speak for all of us when I say you are in a welcome place. And, you know, I think we're, if you have any questions or anything, any of your peers or us would be happy to answer any questions you have. And also the staff are great people to ask if you have questions about process or kind of how things go here. So I think with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Frederick Staret.
Present.
Michael Paderas.
Present.
Steve McGank.
Here.
Kelly Rast.
Present.
Gregory Wolf.
Here.
Andrew Logan.
Present.
Leslie Hind. Lindsay Grisay.
Present.
Timothy Orick. Brad Miller. Craig Connell.
Present.
Kevin Hogan. And that is 12.
Wonderful.
Do you want me to read the statement?
Sure.
Sorry. The meeting is now being recorded in the Board Hearing Room with Planning Commission members attending in person. There is an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. The Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by your name and phone or phone number used to join the webinar. And your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff and presenters, please state your name every time you begin to talk into the microphone so that people attending via Zoom can hear you and the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Linda. Let's start off with public comment. Do we have anybody wishing to make a public comment here today?
I do not have anybody signed up and nobody on Zoom is raising their hand.
Okay, with that, then I think we will move to the next portion of the meeting. And just because there's some newer members of the Planning Commission, this is the portion of the meeting where the various commissioners are obligated to disclose any ex parte communications. And what that means is, you know, with regard to the matters that are on the agenda tonight, if you have any conflicts of interest, where you may have an actual pecuniary interest in the matter that we're discussing. For example, we're talking about like the record date of the moving that record date up for the deeds. Let's say you were applying for something and you are benefited by what we're voting on. That would be something that should be disclosed and maybe obligate you to step away and not participate in that. Or if you've had any ex parte communications with people about these matters, this would be the time of the hearing to go ahead and just disclose those for the benefit of all the commissioners. So if anybody has those, feel free to speak up now. Okay, hearing none. Then I think the next part of the meeting, we will go to the agenda. Does anybody have, do any commissioners want to add or make any amendments to the agenda that we have today? Do I need a motion to approve the agenda or do we just go? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Kelly Rast, second. I'm sorry, sir. I don't know.
Sorry, Gregory Wolf.
Thank you.
Okay, so we don't need to do a roll call?
I don't think roll call.
Okay.
So yeah, just a voice.
Thank you. I'm learning as well. So appreciate your patience with me. That works. So it sounds like we have a motion. We have a second. So the agenda is adopted by the commission. The approval, the next thing on the agenda are the approval of the meeting minutes from the October 24th, 2023 meeting. First, does anybody have any corrections or amendments to those meeting minutes as you've reviewed them? Okay, can I have a motion to approve or adopt the meeting minutes from the October 24th, 2023 meeting?
Gregory Wolf, so moved.
And a second?
Andy Logan, second.
Okay, and that should have a roll call?
Madam Chair, I don't believe you need to do a roll call on that. I do have one small correction when that is done though as well.
Okay. I think with that, with the motion and the second, we have an adoption of the meeting minutes. Mr. Leipzig, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I just would do a, you would still have to complete a vote. That's for a quick vote on both the the agenda itself and the approval of the minutes.
Okay, can I have a roll call vote?
You can actually.
Oh, just.
Do a voice, a voice vote.
Um, all those in favor of adoption of the agenda say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved by the Planning Commission. And can I have a voice call vote for those in favor of adopting the meeting minutes from the October 24th, 2023 meeting? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, it sounds like the meeting minutes are approved. And so I think with that, the new lock record date is on the agenda. I think Karen Miller, you would like to discuss what was included in our packet for today?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna, Jay Leipzig, I'm just gonna jump in real quickly as an introduction while Karen gets, gets settled. But this item, you've seen the, the draft text, draft discussion has been before you a couple of times. So tonight we are conducting a public hearing to change the official lot of record date from March 1st, 1982 to April 7th, 2006. And with that, I think Karen is ready. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Karen Miller. As we discussed, we planning staff has brought this to the attention of the Planning Commission. We've had several recent people who have had to wait a long time for planning to research their property and get back with them whether or not their property is, is considered to be conforming with the regulations or not conforming. So we, we thought about it and we thought it was advisable to update the, the date in which we applied the subdivision regulations. Right now we have to research back to 1982. The problem with that is that records prior to the mid 2000s are not indexed. The, the deeds are not indexed with the tax ID number, making it very difficult to trace the divisions of land. And so with that, the, the planning staff recommends adjusting that upward to August, not August, uh, where's it, April 7th, 2006. Last time we spoke, I had said January 1st, 2007. But after that, I got together with our mapping staff and looked at what records are available. And the way that that the county archives our property data is we do several data dumps each year. And so we, I looked with the mapping staff at the, the, the data collection for 2006 and 2007. And when the property lines were preserved along with the associated owner names and lot areas and zoning, that type of stuff. And then also when the, the county collected aerial photography for the year. The, the AIM staff has aerial photography done generally the end of March, maybe early April. About every year, every other year. And so there was not any aerial photography done in 2007. So, so we looked at kind of that perfect time where we had aerial photography done at the end of March of 2006. And then also those property lines were preserved in archive in, in that date of April 7th, 2006. And so with that, if, if this amendment is approved, we'll be able to, to create a picture of that date in which all of the, what all of the properties looked like in unincorporated Johnson County will, will know their legal descriptions. It will have a picture of, of the various properties and all of that associated data with it. So that's the reasoning for picking the date that you, you've seen changed in the, those proposed zoning amendments. And just a little bit of background, generally plating requirements apply when you divide a piece of property with some exceptions. And one of those exceptions is has, has the property, property been divided since right now, 1982? And and is it eligible for a track split? So sometimes there are some exemptions from plating. And so with this, this new date, that's when those subdivision regulations would kick in. And with that, I will just show you briefly what those changes are. There's, there's very few changes that have been added since we spoke last in October, that the original changes are in red and the new suggested changes are in blue. And so there's three articles that we touched. One, the first article to look at is the general subdivision regulations. And so the first thing we did is we, we condensed and rewrote the, the section that describes when subdivision regulations are applied. It was pretty wordy and intricate. And basically, all we need to say is that if you, to divide property in unincorporated Johnson County, you need to plat except for a series of exceptions. And so that's what section three, three says. And then the, the next paragraph points out that no building permit shall be issued for construction on any land that has not been subdivided in compliance with the regulations and, and all of other regulations. With the exception that you can get building permits for ordinary maintenance and repair, like roofing, windows, things like that, because we don't want our buildings to fall in disrepair, even if they are on a parcel that isn't conforming with our regulations. And one of the recommendations last time was to, to to further clarify ordinary maintenance and repairs to existing structures. So that's put in there. And then section four are the, the listed exemptions from the subdivision regulations. And so planning staff thought about our, our regulations and, and how we, we commonly use the regulations and administer them. And we, we added several more clarifying additions to the exemptions. One is just to make it clear that if you are eligible for a lot split per Article 29, then you don't have to, to plat. F says that if you are applying for a special permit, that, that that does not need to be platted the land on which that the special permit is applying to. And just to explain what a special permit is, it's it's a permit that allows utilities and other public, public projects, like for instance, like schools and parks and things like that. So, so a special permit, it goes through a public hearing and any ground on which that, 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 that project is located on does not need to go through a public hearing. G is right-of-way dedications, things like a bridge project, things like that. Land for parkland. And then lastly, annexations. All of those are generally, you know, kind of an act of another jurisdiction or, you know, a, a project for the greater good. Are there any questions about this article before I move on to the next? All right, thank you. So then the next article is the lot split provisions. And here we, we simply changed the date from 1982 to that April 7th, 2006. And then also, one thing that we did also recommend while we were looking at the section is in section two, taking out the, the requirement that upon approving a track split, we send the application to the zoning board members for their review and comment. And the reason why we, we recommend to take this section out, this paragraph, not paragraph, sentence out is that this is a purely administrative section. And if, if all of the, the approval standards are met, we're required to approve the property. And so but what this does is it, it holds up a landowner's approval of their lot split. And sometimes that has caused people some problems. Perhaps they've had like a, a closing on a real estate deal or something like that. So that's, that's why we, we're recommending that. And then, then there's a few grammatical things. So before I move to the last article, are there any questions? All right. And then the last article is the non-conforming lots and uses. And again, we're changing the date of, of looking at a prior date and and indicating that in the rural district, if you have a lot that's established prior to that April 7th, 2006, you can get a, a building permit for a single-family home on that lot. And then the section B clarifies that and changes the date that if you have a, a lot in the residential districts and it was established prior to that April 7th, 2006. And if, and even if that lot has a smaller lot area width or depth than required, then then you can get a building permit for a single-family home. So that's the last of the changes. Are there any questions about this article or any others?
Lindsay Grisay, I actually had a question about section six within this article.
Yes.
Um, just wanting to make sure I'm understanding how you intend this article to read. So in six, capital B, part one, there's A, B and C. And you have an or between A and B and an and between C. And so is it intended that they can either meet A or B, but have to meet C? Is that the?
Yes, yes, that is. I'm, I'm glad, I forgot to point this out.
Okay.
This has been a longstanding error and it's, it's made things rather difficult when we're dealing with these, these non-conforming buildings. But yes. So eat, so when you're looking at alterations and enlargements of a non-conforming structure, the alterations or enlargements would comply with these regulations and not increase or extend the degree of conformity, or the alterations are required by law or county regulations. So either one of those two. And then it also, the alterations would conform with all other regulations applicable to the district. So.
And this Commissioner Grisay, I just don't want to have added ambiguity, because I think there's two ways of reading how this is worded. It can either be that you need A alone and B and C, B and C together, or A or B with C. And so maybe a suggestion would be to have, you know, C kind of stand by itself and then it be clear that A or B is required. It's just susceptible to two different ways of reading it.
I can clarify that. And I might need to add a little bit of, of maybe introductory wording or, or something like that. But so maybe if, if there is a motion to approve that they could reference this sec, article 24, section six and ask to clarify that.
Sure. That was my only comment. Does anybody else on the Planning Commission have additional questions about the proposed changes?
So if if so, so inclined, on the second page of the, the memo, there's a suggested motion. And then then right above that are the, some possible next steps after the public hearing has been opened and closed today. The, you can forward this with a recommendation to the, the Board of County Commissioners. If, if more changes or information is needed, it can be continued. Or, or if, if for some reason it's not considered to be something desirable that the Planning Commission wants to pursue, it could just be tabled indefinitely. So.
Commissioner Grisay, does anybody have any concerns that you would like to share with the group about adopting the proposed changes? I would suggest with a clarification on this particular article. Is there any concerns from the commissioners?
Ms. Kelly Rast, it's been in front of the board three times. I think it's definitely Karen has proven the validity of why this needs to be cleaned up and taken care of. And I think they've done a good job figuring out the best way to do it and explain it. Outside of your comment, I think it's good to go.
All right. With that, can I get a, can I get somebody to maybe read the motion to adopt?
Excuse me, this is a public hearing.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
I think there might be like one or two people on Zoom. And then I, I see some people in the audience that might like to make comments.
Um, yes. So can we open the floor for any public comments regarding this new proposed regulations?
So the two individuals on Zoom, if you wish to speak, you're welcome to raise your hand. Otherwise, there is no raised hands.
No raised hands?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well then I think the public comment period is over. So then it would be time for a vote. So can I have a motion to approve the proposed regulations with clarification?
Madam Chair, Gregory Wolf, I moved that the Planning Commission recommended the Board of County Commissioners adoption of the proposed attached zoning regulation amendments, which designated a more recent date on which to apply subdivision regulations, as well as some grammatical changes. Subject to the proposed changes we discussed here today related to Article 24, Section Six, Paragraph B1.
Ms. Rast, second.
Okay, so can I, so do we do a voice vote and then a roll call or?
We do a roll call vote.
Okay, can I do a roll call vote for that?
Yes, ma'am. Frederick Staret.
Ruger, yes or aye?
Will you, microphone?
Sharing. Aye.
Thank you. Michael Paderas.
Aye.
Stephen McGank.
Aye.
Kelly Rast.
Aye.
Gregory Wolf.
Aye.
Andrew Logan.
Aye.
Leslie Hind. Lindsay Grisay.
Aye.
Timothy Orick. Brad Miller.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
And Kevin Hogan.
Aye.
And that is 12 ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. So this will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on January 11th, 2024 at 9:30 in the morning in these chambers, which are the Board of County Commissioners Hearing Room, 111 South Cherry Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Leipzig, do you or Sean have a director's report for today?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things for you today. The, there is a, in our meeting in December, which is December 19th, which is not the fourth Tuesday, that's the third Tuesday of the month because of the, the Christmas holiday. That is our next meeting, December 19th, 5:45. We have scheduled a public hearing to discuss the new Century Air Center and executive airport land use compatibility plans. It will be before you that evening for a public hearing. And then preceding that is also a public hearing with the Airport Commission that's scheduled for December 6th of 2023. So that is coming up. There's also a, a very good possibility of having the health and environment staff here to provide an update on the environment, environmental sanitary code. However, we don't have that confirmed yet. So that is still, ask for, for some flexibility on that one. If it is not in December, it'll probably be in, in January. But that is coming up fairly shortly. We also appreciate the great comments at the previous meeting that I missed talking about the expanded notification areas and minor plats. Staff is still looking at that and continuing to do some additional research. We probably will have some information for you at our January meeting. We could talk about that a little bit. And, and working with our legal staff. So additional updates will be forthcoming on that one. Also, wanted to give a quick update on our preparation for a zoning and subdivision regulation update. We could talk about that more in December as well, as we move into this next year. But basically in summary, what, what this Planning Commission has done is we, we have a year in review where we provide kind of a summary of all of the cases throughout the year. So you can see those in chronological order. We'll have that report for you in, in January, January 23rd is our meeting in 2024. So we'll have that document available, available for review. Also talk about future projects for this next year. And then staff is also working with the Board of County Commissioners and our other zoning boards to schedule a date for a joint meeting with Planning Commission and the zoning boards, which we've done. It's usually held sometime in January, February. But that date in February, that would be our next regularly scheduled meeting of this, this body would be on February 27th, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month. That is the day that we're going to try to have it, but I don't have that firmed up yet. So I'll, I'll keep you apprised on that as that develops. But that's what we're looking at. So our next meeting is December 19th for the hearings. And then we'll have a meeting in January, January 23rd. And then some kind of a training or a joint meeting with the zoning boards and Plating Commission on February 27th. Oh, yes. And sorry, I, I forgot to do the update for the airport plans. So then I'm gonna turn it over to Diane Wicklund, who also has a report for you on those, those plans as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. I just wanted to give a few brief updates to the update for the airport compatibility plans. First is we sent you an email, all the Planning Commissioners yesterday that had the link to the current airport plans. I think that was requested last month. So, so you can go onto that link, which is part of the rural comprehensive plan and, and take a look at the current, current plans. Second is the consultant is working on making revisions to the draft documents from the version that you saw. last month. And then it's also kind of working on those charts and exhibits and fixing those that was also discussed last month. Third thing is the public hearing with the Airport Commission is scheduled for next week on December 6th. So they'll, they'll hold their public hearing, take public comment and review those draft documents. And then we also, like Jane mentioned, we published for the public hearing for the planning commission for this December 19th. Hopefully everyone can attend that meeting. And that will be for you will, that meeting, you'll review that final, final draft. And then also receive public comment on those, those draft documents. So I think that's all the updates I had. If you have any questions, I can answer those, but and then we'll be back here on the 19th to hold public hearings.
Just a quick update on the airport compatibility plans, we have a committee, the whole schedule with the Board of County Commissioners for, I believe it's January 4th of 2024, and that will be before them for action, probably mid-January in 2024.
Wonderful. Does anybody have, any of the commissioners have any old business or new business that they would like to raise before the commission? Okay, hearing none. I think we're at adjournment unless anybody disagrees. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Gregory Wolf, so moved.
And a second?
Ms. Rast, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? All right, we're adjourned for December.